Call the order of a special meeting for the town of Cobalt. Six thirty. Disclosure of pecuniary interest and general nature thereof. None. Okay, so I have, I'd like to introduce a draft motion. To go into a closed session. As per section two thirty-nine of the municipal act. Under security of property and up to the municipality and local board. So I need a mover and a seconder. Well, no, I'm sorry, I need to suspend procedural bylaw, sorry. A motion to suspend procedural bylaw in order to. Go in to convene into a closed session as per section two thirty-nine of the municipal act. As amended in order to address a time sensitive matter pertaining to subsection two eight. The security of property of the municipality or a local board. Mover and a seconder, moved by Gary. Hughes, seconded by councillor Anderson. I we have to call. Okay, so all in favor? Gary? Okay, so. Adoption of meeting agenda. Draft motion be it resolved that council approved the agenda, the special meeting dated June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three as presented. I need a mover and a seconder. Harry, councillor Harry, councillor Gary. And all in favor? Carrie? Item four, municipal strategic plan. So this is where I asked everybody to bring some ideas to the table.
See Jim stole one of my ideas I was talking about, he took it. Even quiet.
I think we're gonna have some ideas repeat as we go through. You know what you say, great minds think alike. Sounded good. So do we want to read councillor Starchuck's recommendations out loud? And then we'll go from there? Everybody okay with that? So he's got number one, traffic pedestrian safety throughout the town at certain intersections needs to be analyzed. Number one is Lang Street and Argentine Street. His concern is that a vehicle stopped at the stop sign at Argentine and is making a left or right turn onto Lang or Prospect Avenue. It's difficult to see around the buildings to either side to assure there's no oncoming traffic. So that a safe turn can be completed. He's personally looked three, four times before making the turn. And as soon as he started into the turn, a vehicle usually moving quite rapidly comes into view and it's a risk of a collision. He's suggesting maybe a three-way stop there. That's his first one. The other one is Furland Avenue and Lang Street. Saint Pat's School is right there, so plus the transit bus stop. And several school buses access the area during the week. He's thinking maybe a four-way stop at the intersection, plus the pedestrian crosswalk.
Well, he stole off me. Minus the four-way stop, four-way stop.
Yeah, and the four-way stop is so that traffic can't have that much momentum coming up to the top of the hill. From either direction.
It do come by quite fast.
Yeah. My only concern is maybe in the winter, it might be a little trickier. And then there's Miller Avenue and Galena Street, the south end entrance to the town by the glory hole head frame. How was the speed limit changes from sixty to forty? He's noticed that when he drives the transit bus making a left turn onto Miller from Galena is somewhat challenging. He can see the traffic coming from the south end around the blind corner suddenly after checking left or right a few times before making a left turn. So he's wondering maybe if a stop sign there to slow motorists down a bit. Okay? He's got two more. Prospect and Galena. When you're making a left turn onto Galena from Prospect, there's a steep hill which creates a bit of a blind spot for a couple of seconds where some vehicles would not be visible. Until you're ready to make your left turn. And he's suggesting maybe another three-way stop there. And then there's Lang Street and Park Place. Basically the same situation as Prospect and Galena, making a left turn onto Park Place. Can be challenging at times to a bit of a blind spot to oncoming traffic from the north on Lang Street. And he's suggesting another three-way stop there. And we all know that some people definitely don't do forty through town, which makes it even a little more difficult, more challenging. And his second idea was a makeover to the downtown buildings. He said the Legion and the Fraser, they both need painting and restoration work done. While I agree the Legion is not a town building, but the Fraser is. So, and the murals around town are fading and something I've wondered if we could get somebody in to refresh those. If, what, find out what, what cost would be involved in that? And the fire hall museum. Needs to be relocated, he's suggesting. And his third idea was sewage and stormwater pipes need to be separated so we can fix roads up. That, I think, could be a bit more challenging, but it's a definite idea we can bounce around. And then he's got something on the baseball diamond in the field, the backstop behind the diamond is not properly aligned to the diamond and the outfield posts. Perhaps correcting the position of the outfield post would fix the issue because he'd like to see the park being used more regularly. And he apologized for sneaking in the fourth idea, but he couldn't resist. So. Those were councillor Starchuck's ideas. And you'll notice that. Or have them on the screen, so once we have all our ideas up there, we can. Discuss and narrow it down maybe. Okay, so do you want to start?
One of my ideas was Jim kind of stepped on a little bit with the crosswalk there at the Saint Pat's. Kind of at the top of two hills, you can't really see a lot, I know there's some extracurricular after school and the crossing that's not there. I'd like to see maybe not four-way stops because we can't have stop signs all through the town. But certainly a lit up crosswalk where you push the button and you cross there at night or after hours. Somewhat similar to what they have on. White Wood and Liskert or even by the French School in Helleberry, you know, we don't need a fancy fancy one, but maybe something with a light on top of the pole. That was one of my ideas. Another idea was. Our town meetings, stretch them to three, well, I'd like maybe once a month, but I was gonna suggest stretching to three every three weeks instead of just every two weeks. Now, of course, every one week. And also with our taxes and our tax base, I'd like to see it go to most, what most towns around do is quarterly, every three months instead of the two months and skip six, two months and skip six. I think the girls in the office actually worked on a proposal, I think, a few years ago about it. So they already have the paperwork drawn up, maybe one of our meetings we should discuss that. And look into that because the town has no money that comes in from September until March. So it's a big gap with no money that comes in. Plus, as taxpayer, I'm used to paying them every three months. It's kind of a big hit when you get them one month, the next month you got another. Whack to do, right?
What was your second?
Oh, stretch our meetings.
Oh.
Three weeks or at least, one month would be my number one push, but three weeks would be fine as well, this two weeks is a lot of rushing. Just getting our paperwork on Friday and then having to be up to snuff by Tuesday, sometimes it's a little bit hard. Not really supposed to be working on the weekends, we are government officials, you know. So that was three of mine anyways. I think one for safety was though the crosswalk at the school, I figured that'd be something easy, might even be a grant, might even be something where the. The school board might pick in some money for something like that too, I don't know.
Councillor Anderson? Remind me grant on that. I have a thought that might work.
If you're something, probably, or safety, some sort of safety.
First of all, yeah, we've mentioned the. The, the fire museum building and I definitely, I think we've got to get a move on applying for grant to get food bank moved in. Into downstairs here. That would be a much better place for it. It would eliminate a lot of the problems we've got over there, make enough room to do things.
Food bank relocation?
Yes, food bank relocation definitely, because we've got to do something with that building, so. Second one would be in the park. To get a recreation committee, they could start to do more organizations towards music in the park or sports. Getting baseball teams going, stuff like that, so that we actually utilize the park a lot more. And there's a lot of things that can be done over there for all different ages. And the third thing. We, many, many years ago, kind of worked on a little bit. Our. Population that really doesn't fit into the town. Because of their drug use, alcohol use, that kind of thing. We have to find some way to at least encourage them to make them feel comfortable in our community. We've taught, we have talked somewhat in private on accommodations and stuff like that. And I think we need to try and come up with some ways to help their social well-being. Now, relate back to Tina. Two administrations ago or three administrations ago. She went across the street at the square and there had been always a group of women that looked after the garden in the park there. And they weren't able to do it that year. And Tina went over and twisted a few arms over there and encouraged them to come over. And do some weeding and stuff like that over one summer. So it's like trying to accommodate them into the community so they, they're not just totals, they're not feeling like they're total social outcasts. That they belong here and maybe we can help to lift them up in other ways. Okay? And councillor?
Yeah, I agree with that one hundred percent on the food bank, that was my top priority. Relocate that and do something with that fire museum. It's, we don't want anybody getting hurt, that's gonna come out on the sidewalk, we're probably a disenter. It's pretty rough up there if anybody's been up to look at it, I think that needs addressed quickly. We need a fire truck desperately, I think that should be one of our highest priorities. And we also need a snowplow. The one is in pretty rough condition, it was meant to be a two-year. Carryover and I think we're into the fifth or the sixth year with that plow now. It's getting pretty rough.
The one that does the streets, the big one?
Yeah. Yeah, that's one they bought down in south of London somewhere. Yeah, and it was meant as a two-year solution, I think we're on year five or year six now, so. We're starting looking at replacing some, some public works equipment.
So along those lines, we need to start. Rebuilding our reserves. And really looking at our long-term financial situation. Because what we've got is not sustainable. And I'd really like to see an actual operational community. Building space that can be used, it doesn't have to be this, but something where that groups could. Like nonprofit groups could hold meetings in, I don't know where the Lions Club presently meets, but. This is in a way too big and too expensive for somebody to rent for a meeting, so. Some space, community space that people could use, the kitchen here isn't functional, it could be this space, but. This is actually quite an expensive space to heat and maintain. Yeah, it was in our binder, we've talked about it before, but I can't remember the numbers. But if somebody's having a meeting, they're not going to spend over a hundred and fifty dollars for a group to have a social meeting.
So that I don't, you don't feel like I'm cutting off anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. Councillor Wobbs?
Well, thank you, your worship.
You're very welcome.
Goodness, yes, you guys have all said a lot of things that are pretty much on my list as well. Certainly a fire truck, you know, we have fires going to the east of us, we've got fires going to the west of us. We can certainly expect more fires in the future, not less. And we'd better have trucks that are up to the task. In part because we have to hold our own on our mutual aid as well. We can't send out unreliable trucks to help in emergency situations, so that's a very high priority for me. The buildings in town, we have the Jack legs on the historical society building are rotten and need to be pulled off, saw them off, whatever you want to do with them. The fire museum, that's been falling down for thirty years. The northeast corner has been slowly subsiding. And that's going to continue and it's going to get worse, the spring and thaw, freezing and water building up in the mix, crazy winters we're getting. We got a sewer line up by Ruby Street that goes down the hill. And it's in really rough shape and we've got to make sure that gets fixed soon or we're going to be deeply in it. And it won't be pleasant, it'll back things up all over the place, so. That has to be a high priority, a lot of the things that are in the public works nature that, some of them are scary and need to be done and that's one we can certainly identify. Fix the weir down at the. Wetlands. I know Aqua offered to do it for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I think last term we were looking at it with. SEI and I think the cost was significantly lower than that, they were also looking at the V cut. But just, I think, putting a plate on top that had the V cut in it. And I think their price was close to around sixteen thousand, so. I think we should investigate that carefully because a hundred and eighty thousand versus a less expensive fix could be something that we need in the short term. I'm very glad Angela mentioned rebuilding reserve funds because that is one of the most important things we have facing, is we've got less than enough reserves to keep the town running for just a month right now. We're going to be behind the gun with roll the dice on having a good winter. We can't roll the dice on two or three winters, it's got to be rebuilt. It's just too dangerous to leave it that way. Some of Jim's comments, I tend to agree with Gary, the idea of putting up three-way stops and blocking lying every other block is just not feasible. For a whole host of reasons, including fluid traffic motion. The one that he identified, the first one. He was looking at.
Argentine and Prospect?
Argentine and Prospect, yeah. Argentine and Prospect or was it?
Right by the inch square there.
Yeah, the inch square, that's.
Lang Prospect kind of dead end right together, I guess.
There's a different name for it though, something Lane Cobalt Lane or something like that. And Highway eleven B.
He's talking to the bank, at the old bank.
At the bank, yeah. That's Argentine.
Lang and Argentine, yeah.
I just don't think we're, I think we're here to present new ideas and not go into details of other people's.
Oh, true, but, you know, just give me a minute to finish, that would be really nice. The only thing I was gonna suggest is maybe we could look at turning that little bit that goes down the bank into a one-way street, we've had it that way before. That solved the question of trying to come out onto eleven B, turning left or right because these lines of sight are very bad there. And we could make it one way and everybody else is going to go up and around past the fire hall and it solves the problem.
That's not a bad fix.
All right, I'll apologize my error in my notes on my phone. Didn't print them out neatly. Okay, so I have a few things as well. I'd like us to maybe look at cleaning up the town, make it visually appealing to the tourists. It's not something that would be cost intensive, something that's easy to do. It's like just look at things through, from the perspective of somebody who doesn't live here every day and see it every day. And things will pop out at you that could be improved. I'd like to continue working on getting a designated seniors living building here. One of the buildings. The biggie that I would really like to investigate is what to do with our old gravel pit at Sharp Lake, our Sharp Lake property. As it stands right now, we have an asset sitting there that we can't do anything with it, well, we can't operate a gravel pit. As the courts deem. But. And we're paying taxes, yes, it's not a lot, it's eight hundred dollars a year. To Coleman Township for it, but maybe we can investigate if we flatten it, would it increase resale value of that property? To make it into building lots and then sell it as a building opportunity for somebody to build, separate into lots and build or?
I spoke to Dan about that, he, I think he'd be interested in buying it.
Well, exactly, I think we'd like to get as much as we possibly could for it, and this market especially. That would go a long way towards building our reserves, helping to finance a fire truck. Which could solve some of the issues that we're facing, but the big one is to build up our reserves. Fire truck financing ideas was the other thing on my list, now we did have a, I had a meeting with Sean, our fire chief. And we bounced around some ideas, so he's looking into some stuff, the staff is looking into some stuff. Or seeing what we can come up with, different ideas to approach it. The other thing is, and it's something that I've been chasing for a while now, is we need to update our animal control bylaw. Right now, I'm sure the dogs outnumber the people in Cobalt. And it becomes a real nuisance to a lot of the residents. It's not appealing to somebody that's looking to move here. When you sit out in the evening and that's all you can hear are dogs barking here and dogs barking there and it's very annoying.
Dog shit all around your restaurant.
And, well, not just your restaurant, a lot of places. So I think we need to really update our animal control bylaw, reduce the number of animals that people are allowed to have. Maybe put a requirement like they have for chickens, that you have to have a minimum square footage per animal. So that it stops having numerous animals in small places. Because let's face it, five dogs and you have a very small place or five dogs in an apartment, not a good idea. It's not fair to the animals and it's not fair to the rest of the people that live in close proximity. So that's a big one for me. And a discussion about the future of our community center. I'd like to have staff prepare a report for council and bring it to council to show what it gets rented for, what it costs to operate. And the feasibility of even operating it as a rental any longer. Because the insurance costs have increased so significantly that there's not really any profit in it any longer. And it's not a high rental attraction. It's got the stairs, we don't really have a great functional kitchen in it. It's going to cost to update it and what kind of return on investment would we even get by putting that money in? I don't think a lot, most people are looking for venues that are ground floor, accessible, easy to get in. No risk of anybody falling if they've had one too many beer at the end of the night. So, those are my ideas. So now do we want to pick through all our ideas and check them around? We've all, as I said, had some repeats, so. I'll just, I'm gonna turn myself around so I can see what's all on our screens. So we've got twenty-two ideas.
Don't you keep us busy for the rest of the.
Well, I'd like just to narrow it down a little, maybe we can go down and through and identify what's, what's gonna cost.
Yeah.
And what's not gonna take a lot, it's just gonna take some effort, some planning.
If we really want to build up our reserves, then we gotta take a look, ten things off the list right there. Can't build up reserves and then spend a whole bunch of money.
No.
That's a tough part.
Now councillor Cooper, you mentioned the snowplow. What about putting a blade on our loader?
Loader's already busy though and all the, all the laneways. You can't use it as a main road machine.
No.
Or you could, but then your laneways are gonna suffer.
Yeah, but.
You got places that only that loader will fit. So if you're gonna be putting a sixteen-foot blade onto a loader, you're not really accomplishing anything because you still gotta go back to the bucket to do the laneways.
Okay.
I think that's, Aaron's not here tonight, eh?
No, but maybe these are some ideas we can pass on to public works and get them to come back to council with the report on as well?
That's what we had mentioned the other day, is have staff kick in on this as well with their ideas.
There were two ideas that came through staff, one is a service review. And to look at setting funds and overall, have a look at items. Number two was possibly look for a contractor of record. For municipality instead of us always having to go out, get in an agreement with a contractor to do certain specific jobs over a couple of year period. So we're not spending a lot of time and get a discounted rate. Were a couple of ideas that came through staff, so.
Okay, so can we scroll up to the top of our list? Or are we at the top? Reading glasses, I'm having a hard time reading.
Well, we start with stuff that's gonna make us money.
Well, I think that would be our Sharp Lake property, would everybody be in agreement on that?
It's gonna have to be rental property.
Yeah. Cobalt has a hard.
Long-term revenue or a one-time payment?
Well, the thing is.
Cobalt likes to sell things, then they're, they're gone for good.
But, the other thing is, you get into rentals as a municipality, your insurance costs are gonna be high. You're not creating any taxes for it because it's a permanent property.
New lease. We sold lots.
We could, the cost of severing it is something that we would have to investigate.
Angela would know.
Our real estate lady will know.
Well, you'll have to look at what the zoning will even allow, you can't just lease out six trailer park, like trailer lots if you're not allowed to have that, so I don't know what the zoning is specifically. I don't know what the current zoning is, it was, it was. A gravel pit at one point too, which we're not allowed to do, so.
And the requirements for trailer parks are a lot more stringent than they used to be as well, you have to have an operating subject, you have to have operating water. Yeah, and you have to have the hydro available as well.
The cost of subdividing might be worth it if you could, if, if they will allow it, you have to go through all. The town application, so if they're going to be friendly with us or not, because they want to buy it and subdivide it and make the money themselves, we're kind of hand tied that way.
So what I would propose is maybe could we create an ad hoc committee to investigate? Different possibilities? And ideas on who would like to sit on that ad hoc committee? Gary? Anybody else? Be sitting on that one?
I should have time for that.
I could, I don't know how many people you want in an ad hoc.
How many people can we have in an ad hoc committee? Okay, so why don't we do? Okay, so why don't we do Gary Hughes? Council Hughes, Council Cooper, and uh Council Hunter. It would be a meeting of great minds. See what this can come up with.
Maybe one thing on the, and we were talking about like leasing. And I know a number of years ago, we we threw around um you know, actually selling the lots down in our trailer park here in town to get out of the leasing. Is you would sell the lots to the owners and then they would be paying taxes and then um, the lease, like the rental on the property and look like a big thing to do, but we never got to that stage.
Okay.
Um. Ba- based on the value of those trailers and the lots, you probably make more off of the lease income than you would off of tax income presently. It it's about equivalent.
Yeah.
Um, but it, you may actually earn less by doing that.
Well, now we have some past counselors that have some uh very in-depth historical knowledge about the Sharp Lake property. Um, and sat through the court, uh, two days of court when it went to court about ours operating the gravel pit and everything else, so. You might wanna tap them for information as you're going through everything.
Maybe we should go down and take a look at it.
We add some members of the public to that ad hoc committee. I know George had done some work on that. Few years where you and I bounced emails back and forth for some of the pit stuff for a while.
You know, she's a rally chironi, so. Knows quite a bit about it.
Anybody wants to put their name in the public for that that hasn't.
Okay, well, we can uh accept names from the public who would like to sit on that committee. I think you have to submit them through the office. But we've gotta be above board here. And and I think it's a great place to start because that would tell us where we could be and what we could do. Now, some of this, I think we could um get some staff feedback on. Um. Counselor uh Star Trek suggestions on the pedestrian safety and the traffic safety of pulling out of different intersections. Maybe we could pass that on to our supervisor of public works to look at.
Does the Ministry of Transportation provide any consultation services that way?
Um. I, we we would have to look into that. I know that when we were the Highway eleven B quarter, I know when I was on council, I looked into it. And you would have to apply through the Tomescaning Highway, or no, Traffic Association. Um, and they'd do a s- a traffic study if you met their criteria and they approved it. Um, so I think we'd have to look into what's involved. Um, but I don't think it would hurt to have the public works supervisor take a first look at it.
Yeah, now we own the roads.
Yeah.
Not the, not the government.
But it depends on the class of the roadway, I believe, as to whether it comes under, how, where it comes under in the Ministry of Transportation Act as well.
You know, for a couple of quick fixes, I noticed there's a few crazy corners, like the one by the St. Pat's Church around the corner from the store. And also the top of Cobalt Hill. Maybe some of those big silver, you know, those big silver dome things that you can look and you see traffic coming up and down.
Except if the sun hits it a certain way and lights somebody, then you're even more liable.
At night it might, at night it might help because you see lights and stuff, right? Uh, I've seen them around. There there may be a quick cheat fix on some of these.
Definitely something we could pass through to the public works supervisor and get some feedback.
Stop smoking on that hill there in the winter.
Yeah, and that's my concern is that hill can be a little iffy.
Yeah, getting going again. I like the idea, though, of um uh the crosswalk light down at St. Pat's School.
Yeah, I think that's.
Um. Yeah.
Lots of things goes on after hours, you know, the crossroads already gone.
Could you do something like they've done in Hallaberry and have a school zone, like NBC, the school zones are thirty kilometers an hour, so. Could for that section during school hours, could it be reduced further? In Hallaberry, they reduced it to forty in front of the.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Will people reduce?
Well, and the sign actually states school days and school hours that it's active. So again, something we can look into with our public works supervisor.
Your worship. I'm just wondering if you get more compliance, put a camera on it. And people tend to respect cameras. They know they're getting caught.
Yeah, they get a little bit nervous when there's a camera.
Um. Again, I it could be worth looking into. But we're talking, uh, we're then talking about uh money that the municipality's gonna also have to put out. And while some of it may be funded, it's easy to say it's funded, but if we spend money that's funded in some places, then we don't have it to spend it in other areas where we need it, so we still have to be cautious.
Yeah, at least with the flashing lights, you know, cars coming knows there's somebody there because the light's flashing.
Hmm. As long as you get people pushing it and then go running away. Not because of.
I don't, only flashes for a minute or two, I'm sure.
Uh, yeah, I don't think it flashes a long time.
An hour.
Um. I agree that some of our buildings definitely need a little bit of tender loving care. Uh, even our town hall, I noticed the back, the parchings all falling off. Um, so I'm wondering if that's something that we can look at with the public works supervisor again. And see if we can get some of the maintenance, um, the cleanup as well. Uh, done around some of the municipality-owned buildings.
Maybe we can reach out to some of those ones we were talking about that need a, need a little up, a little help in life, that vulnerable. Maybe they can clean up the town and we can pay them with small, small amount of money.
Unfortunately, yeah, because of the um union contract, I don't think we can, because someone taking work away from our public works.
Don't know if they'll mind, though, picking up coverage.
Still a violation of the union.
What if it's classed as a beautification of town, then it wouldn't be anything to do with town workers?
Some contracting.
Beautification of town or uh standards or something like that. And it wouldn't affect the union at all, I don't think.
We need.
I'm sure none of them would want to do it, but you never know.
We don't want to commit ourselves to death. I can say we can do a beautification committee.
You might try a letter of understanding with the union to see if they would be willing to allow a specific kind of a project. On a one-time basis.
A possibility. Uh, then separate stormwater and sewage. Uh, I think that would be a very costly thing.
Plus, uh, did they not say we didn't need that now?
Yes. Yeah.
That's good news. A little bit of good news.
Uh, baseball diamond repairs, I again, that's something maybe we can talk to the public works supervisor about. And see if that can be straightened out. We talked about the crosswalks. Um, if we can ask staff to submit their report again, if it's prepared about quarterly tax bills.
Like, got such a one made up already.
Isn't it just a matter of.
Scheduled, sorry.
Excuse me, um, I know they were being sent out just twice a year to save money for preparing them and everything, but if we just change the date to that they're they're due to actual quarterly. So when you get the one, when you get the first one, you know, it's due almost then and then you know, two and a half months later or something like that. So it spreads out when they actually, when they actually ask.
The staff report will have all that moving down in it.
Yeah, we can put that on a council meeting and discuss it. Um, council meeting schedule change, again, we can put that on a council meeting to discuss. I know it's been discussed a couple of times over the years.
I believe that was included in the traffic pedestrian safety.
Which we're gonna have public works look into.
Oh, no, the crosswalk.
Um, hey, food bank relocation, I think that's something that we should put some effort into. Um, as council, uh, how does everybody else feel about that one?
Well, I'm not in a huge rush because that doesn't affect all the taxpayers in the town, so that's not on number one on my list. It actually affects most of the non-taxpayers.
Okay.
I'd like to concentrate on things for taxpayers first.
Oh.
But it's certainly up there.
Um, Council Wilcox, we'll go down the table.
Your worship, uh, just to comment again and reinforcing Angela's point that we need a meeting place and perhaps the front part of the old doctor's office could be walled off and used as some kind of a community drop-in center and meeting area, something like that, if the food bank doesn't need the whole space.
Okay. Council Hunter?
Uh, and that could be positive for the food bank, too. Like, I don't know if there are other services you want to provide. I don't know your vision for the space that you were saying, like, there's things that you want to do. So that would be interesting when talking about the food bank.
Vision number one is to get into a safe building that doesn't leak. Uh, that you're not wasting town water supply because the water's always gotta be turned on or else all the pipes freeze. We either freeze or roast. The heating isn't very stable in there. There's a lot of reasons for for needing to move.
Um, but that, that could be maybe worked in to that somehow. Um. Maybe I can come back. Can I be at the end? Well, so I could write down my idea when it comes back.
Okay.
I've already spoken to the food bank. Um, they are willing to take that space downstairs. Uh, they're willing to rent the front half of it as well, if we leave it as one space. Um, we'll have to discuss it further with them. But that was something that was supposed to be coming up on the next agenda anyway. So, but they are willing to pay for that additional space to have the whole space for themselves. Because they do need it, apparently.
Well, maybe we can put that on uh at the council meeting to discuss whether we want to rent the whole space, part of the space, and have part of the space as a rental facility for meeting venues. Um, I'd also like to put out there that I think the Golden Age Club is also amenable to renting out their space. I know it doesn't do anything for the town. Um, as long as they don't have anything else scheduled or planned. So.
Uh, in our room over there, like, that makes an excellent meeting room for for any groups. And that should be available, like the, it's, yeah, the historical society has been using it because we couldn't meet across the street in our little head frame. And that's what that room was, you know, created for. Was for, for community groups to be able to meet and business groups to be able to meet, that kind of thing.
Oh, yeah, and um I think I mentioned I'd like to look at, have staff per report on the rental of community hall, how often it's been rented, you know, what's been rented. Uh, whether it's a whole hall or they just wanted the business center. And the cost of the insurance to do the rent. And then we can discuss it as a council and council can decide what they want to do. Whether it's feasible to continue that or whether we may want to think about other options.
How would you even find out if even anyone's interested in renting it?
Well, we could look at the past history of the rentals and how we would go about that, I would think.
Cause I, I don't know. Not a lot of people ask us to rent things around here.
I think it hasn't been available for a long time, so I don't think you're gonna have.
They don't have much action there.
Well, no, it has been available, just not during COVID, it wasn't available.
That's a number of years.
Yeah, well, it is a number of years, but we still have the historical data prior to that as well. It'll give us an idea. I'm I'm not saying it's gonna give us a hundred percent clear picture, but it definitely gives us the idea of it. Um, to make a logical and educated guess on, I would think.
Can we ask George, since he's here, about the rentals for the upstairs of the Legion?
Um, not during a council meeting, we can't, but we can definitely invite him to a meeting.
Yeah.
And just speak to us. If that's fellowship council.
Find out there Friday after four.
Okay. Um. And music and sports recreation programming. Um, Counselor Anderson, that's something I've said for a while. I'd like to maybe see if we can get music in the park going. Um, it's a great way of building a sense of community. Um, there's lots of musicians in the area that would probably love to just get together and do a jam session or play odd nights here or there. Um, it's easy enough for people to bring their lawn chairs down or a blanket and sit on the grass and listen to music. Um, bring their bug repellent of choice to do so. Um. So I don't know if we have any budget for recreation. So, no, apparently we do not. Here, our budget was pretty tight, so maybe that could come about, something in that we can look at into next year's budget. Um, depending on what we decide to do with other things, because I don't think it would take a huge cost. And maybe we could even as council put feelers out. Um, asking if there are any musicians in the area that would be interested in coming out to do something like that. I know a lot of other municipalities do it. Uh, Peterborough does it. I know Ashwa has jazz in the park during the summer. I know Hallaberry was doing it last year.
The Golden Age, yeah, go out and have some rockers that love performing whenever they can.
So maybe we can reach out to the Golden Age Club and see if anybody there is willing to. Council Anderson?
Power in the park. Do we have place where you can, you know, like the instruments can be plugged into that kind of thing?
By the center top?
No.
Oh, no.
Across the lake.
Yeah, there is power down.
Is there? Okay, yeah, is that, that's what would be needed.
Now, it has been mentioned to me in the past that we may not have sufficient. Um.
Depends on.
Power? Not sufficient power, sufficient outlets.
Yeah.
Um, so that's something that we may want to look into and get a cost on that and see if we're willing to go ahead with that or not. I just think it'd be a great way to get some more use out of the park, especially in the evenings.
We do have a very popular uh senior jam group around here that meets regularly and they've entertained at the Legion lots and they just, they love doing it.
Okay, so. Um. Do we give direction or we? How do you, how do we want to do that one? Do you want to scan some information, Counselor Anderson, and bring it back to council?
Oh, for that group?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can do.
And put some feelers out and see if they'd be willing to investigate that, doing that.
Is there somewhere from the setup down there? You're not gonna want to be on the dirt, right?
No.
Definitely could look at some solutions down there.
Yeah.
I'd like to take a look inside the doctor's office, too, if we can pencil out. I haven't seen it there yet.
I'm not sure how we'd go about the improved social well-being for vulnerable population.
I don't think anyone is.
Keep thinking. Some here.
Uh, it it's definitely a nice idea. I just don't know how much interest they have in putting effort into it as well. Um. Counselor Hunter?
I just wanted to make a point that renters are indirect taxpayers.
Oh, yes, definitely.
So all all residents are. They actually vote, they're voters and taxpayers, even if it's indirect, so.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
They aren't residents.
They are part of the community and they can join in if they so desire, just like the.
She's talking about food bank. She's talking to me about.
Oh, the food bank?
Well, it's all connected.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all connected, it's all connected.
Um, the fire museum, I believe we were waiting to hear back on some contractors on. The fire museum, I believe we were waiting to hear back on some contractors on the building. So are we still waiting?
Yes.
Okay, so that's where that stands, or we were trying, we've been trying for a few years.
That should be advertised.
It will be. And I believe we did one other time as well, did we not, or did we just recheck?
For some contractors last year.
Yeah.
We're looking to get some.
I'm talking for demolition, not for repair.
I, we need to be very careful about demolition because you have another building that's joined and you can create the same problem with its outside wall that is with the fire museum's outside wall.
We don't have hundreds of thousands of dollars to throw at it either.
No, but it's going to cost almost that much to make sure that the outside wall, I think of that other building. And I don't know for sure, I'm not a structural engineer, is sound to the elements. Because then otherwise we're liable for that building, which we don't own. So I think that's something we'd have to be very careful about investigating.
Engineer will probably give us all the heads up.
And I believe we had an engineer looking at that.
Some possible solutions, but the engineer would like to revisit it to see.
And what kind of costs would be involved with having the engineer revisit it?
Engineer, actually, the engineer that does come has a love of historical buildings, so give it to her very, very.
I don't want to break the bank trying to do some of this either.
We don't have a bank.
No, we don't have a bank, that's a problem. Rebuilding reserves and reassessing long-term finances. I think, again, we'll refer back to the Sharp Lake property as a definite start on that. Other than that, I don't know what, I don't want to see us sell off other assets in town. I don't, we don't have a lot of them left. Counselor Anderson?
Do you think we have vacant lots that are not suitable for building on? That if you seriously, like, Timiscamee Shores did an assessment of their vacant lots, which ones could actually be built on and are reserved for selling only for future development if somebody wants to build a house, but ones that just aren't economically feasible for developing on. And if you look at them, there's rocks this big and there's just no access. But a neighboring property would benefit and actually increase its value if it had more space. So I think that there could be an assessment, even a basic one, public works supervisor or committee walking around with clipboards, making suggestions. Is this a lot that we could maybe offer to a direct neighbor to improve? If, as they improve value, we get improved taxes as well and just makes the town used instead of us holding on to this property. So I know there's concern about us selling things and we can't get it back. But if it didn't have value and it's creating value, then we're actually better off.
We'll definitely do a listing of our vacant lots, town-owned vacant lots.
Public Works Superintendent did provide a listing of properties in town and we're going to review them.
Okay. And that'll be brought to council?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Good suggestion. Any other ideas for building reserves or reassessing our long-term finances? Yay, operational community building. I think that ties back to the food bank relocation and investigating that space. I don't know that we have any other town-owned spaces that are suitable for that. Unless somebody knows something I don't, because I definitely don't know everything. Historical society building, again, I think that comes back to we had a contractor, then we didn't have a contractor and were waiting to get a contractor.
I think a lot of that was discussed in the budget.
Yeah, that's designated in the budget, so.
Number of items.
Okay, so this is already covered off. We just got points, we need to do more. Sewer line maintenance. I would actually like to get a report from the Public Works Supervisor on the sewer line and any suggestions you may have.
Is that the one at the corner that's going across the property?
In fact, I believe he has.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Down the hill from Ruby down to.
Yeah, I think that came up some time ago for discussion of one of the things that.
I think so too.
Public Works had on their list to do.
But it's, again, it's. I think it's a plus item and I'm not saying we can't do it, but we do that, we can't do something else. We gotta really think about that, right?
It may come under other funding as well, though, you know, it's.
But again, you use funding from, for that, then you don't have the funding for something else that may have a higher priority. I'm not saying that's not a priority, because I definitely get what you're saying where things might back up a little, literally.
My impression is that's more likely than unlikely.
So I think if we can get a report on that from the Public Works Supervisor. Weir repairs, I thought the Weir repairs were done.
Well, that's what Alka spoke of.
Yeah.
It was a hundred and eighty thousand dollar commitment.
Operating again.
Achieved that, but we didn't do anything about how to get a better reading on the effluent moving out. There were suggestions made, but then were a lot less than what Alka was talking about. And if it fits the bill, you know, let's save some money.
Okay, definitely something that we'll review. As the council. Town appeal. So if anybody sees anything around town that jumps out at you, that's kind of distracting from the view or takes away from the attractiveness. I don't know if we can send notes into the office and have them accumulated to be looked at. I know there was an instance of a blue bin that was down by the train station and out in views. If you went to go take a picture down there from across the lake of the train station facing the town, it was right in the middle of the picture and somebody actually just moved it behind the sign where there's a sign down there, so it's not right in the middle of the picture anymore. So it looks a lot more attractive, just little things like that. To make it just more visually appealing. Because I noticed when I drive down Jamison, all that stucco falling off the back of the town office looks horrible laying back there.
Maybe we should paint the railing blue again.
Let's not go down the railing road again. The Sharp Lake property. And how does council feel about revisiting and updating our animal control bylaw? I can see some head nods.
Go ahead, yep.
Do we want to do it as a council or do we want to create another ad hoc committee? That we don't necessarily have to start immediately, we can start it down the road so that we're not overloaded with ad hoc committees.
You could be able to handle that as a council, maybe come in the summer, fall kind of thing, maybe.
In the fall, we can put it definitely on the agenda and council, we'll give council a copy of the bylaw a couple of weeks at a time, maybe.
Some of the dogs bark for another three months.
Well, unfortunately, I don't think there's any immediate fix because.
You don't have to wait till fall, but we've got so much things on the plate that.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what's up. And then what do you do when somebody has five dogs, you say, get rid of two?
Well, and that's the thing, I don't think, I think those people have to kind of be grandfathered in.
It's not only the, the control bylaw, it's also our contractor.
Well, it's also the law too. There is a law about barking dogs and it's very hard.
Then it's not being addressed, we have to address it.
Well, I know personally she's addressed my issues and has even before I took this seat. But, and even our previous bylaw control officer explained to me for barking, you have to have a log. You have to log on it, the date, the time the dog barked. If it stops for more than ten seconds, the time starts again. It's not continuous barking.
Don't we have a noise?
Or sorry, it's not ten seconds, it's one minute.
Don't we have a noise pollution, you can't make excessive noise anytime of day here? Classified in the same thing.
And you're definitely free to call the, or contact the bylaw officer and lodge a noise complaint. I know residents have been down that path too and they have achieved some success. I think a lot of it might come down to educating the public that don't expose your neighbors to what you don't want to be exposed to. Respect your neighbors like you want the respect. You wouldn't appreciate somebody putting their dog out at twelve thirty, one o'clock in the morning and barking for a half an hour or three quarters of an hour.
Car horn, walk for an hour.
Yeah.
Or the goat scoot and boogie.
You know. Because then that's how neighbors become bad neighbors and things will escalate. So I, I don't know if we can maybe post things on our Facebook page now and again to remind people that, you know, it's be kind to your neighbors.
We can look at our solutions on social media, but at the same time, we could put on for a future committee, the whole meeting to review the.
Animal control bylaw, definitely, and everybody can go through it and we can, as a council.
Worth a read, I guess. It's maybe worth a read.
I, it's definitely, it's, I think it's outdated. I've read through it. It definitely needs to be updated. And I think in this day and age with the rising costs of everything, I don't know how anybody can afford to have five animals.
Can we get that forward to all the councillors? The current, the current bylaw? We read it on our own time, then bring it to the table.
Yeah.
We get a hard copy of that, please.
I think it'd be good to research if there are other municipalities that have updated bylaws that are successful or challenges with that. I think that the cost to uphold a bylaw, like, it's one thing to have a law, but are you going to actually follow through? What are you going to do? Because I know plenty of people who aren't following the Timiscamee Shores bylaw, which has a limited number of animals. Nobody complains, we're not doing anything. If you complain, to what extent are you willing to go?
So maybe when we look at the animal control bylaw, we can look at imposing penalties some fines that would be enforceable through the court system.
Yes, I think we've worked our way through so that when the bylaw officer gives out a ticket, it connects.
Sure that they.
It's a real ticket now.
Yeah, it can be enforced, that, that makes it a big difference. And I, I have spoken just briefly when the animal control officer was in the office and asked her if we could tackle this project and she'd like to be in on it. And she indicated that she very much would.
Was that the main lady?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and somebody's.
Harry's head's annoying.
And the community center future, so again, if we can get a staff report brought to council. What the history of the rentals, the cost of the insurance, the amount of profit it makes, which part of the hall is being rented or requested. I think that that would give us all some definite food for thought.
Community housing.
So I think, I think a lot of them we can actually say that we can tackle and we can accomplish it in the three and a half years we have left. I know the, the one I'm not sure that we can do anything about in the three and a half years is that, and I didn't see it on the list, the designated seniors living.
We're almost there. I went up by my place. We're almost there.
Almost?
Yeah, there's only a few that are not seniors.
But that's conversations with DSAF and.
The owners of the building.
Yeah, and the owners of the building to see if we could, you know, slowly get it so that we can amalgamate seniors into one and everyone else.
Maybe we can build a big one at Sharp Lake with giant seniors.
And then we'd have to pay, yeah, we'd have to pay transit to go out to do bus runs from there. And, sorry, I did have one other thing on my list and I didn't, it didn't flag me why it was sitting there. Now I do know why. I'd like to investigate, maybe getting some Cobalt flags done up and for sale to some of our residents if they so desire. Maybe we could do it on an order basis. Residents get to put it on our website, the cost, what they'd be, and any residents that are interested.
We have T-shirts too, then.
And flags over. I know when I first moved here, I looked into the possibility of getting a Cobalt flag because I have two poles on my veranda and I thought it would be nice if I could fly a Cobalt and a Canada flag.
You could throw them on all municipal buildings as well, anything we own.
Yeah. Another way of just building a sense of community, a sense of pride in our community. I know a lot of us are very proud to live here and it'd be nice if we could show it. So how does council feel about that?
Yeah, that's fine.
So maybe we could get a costing of different size flag, not the huge, huge ones that we could fly on the main white pole. They're a little big. We have the cost of that one if anybody's interested.
Look into some T-shirts too.
Ah, we could definitely maybe put out feelers to see what the interest in the T-shirts would be.
I could sell it on the restaurant. Or I'll do it myself, I guess, and just sell it at the restaurant.
I'll check and see what the mining museum's selling.
Yeah, they might have stuff too, right?
Oh, yeah, they've got, they've got, oh, yeah, they've got it. Just, and it's not huge sources of revenue, but every, every little bit adds up. That's the way I'm looking at it. Now, as a penny pinching mom, so. Every penny counted. Okay? Anybody have anything else? All right. So do we want to put it out that if the public has any ideas other than what we proposed here tonight, that there are more than.
Municipal office.
Yes, contact the municipal office with your idea, if there are ideas. And we can definitely look at them. Okay? Okay. So. Do we have to adjourn that? No, now I'm going to do this, right?
Yes.
Okay, so four point two, closed meeting, have a draft motion, be it result that council convenia in a closed session as per section two thirty-nine of the municipal law two thousand and one as amended in order to address matter pertaining to subsection two A, the security of the property of the municipality or local board, I need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Cooper, Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Gary? And just to note that after close, we'll be adjourning the meetings, so we won't be going back on. When we kind of close.
We're gonna do an absolute quick break.
Yeah, and we'll take a five, ten minute break so that everybody can refresh.